Comico County Council, I'd like to call this meeting to order, starting with Councilman Bill McCain. Please stand if you'd like.
Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Amen. Councilman Holloway?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, mighty states of America, and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty for all.
Thank you. Okay, council, I'm gonna start off identifying myself. I'm Larry Dodd again, and starting with Council Vice President Cannon, roll call.
Here.
Councilman Ernie Davis.
Here.
Councilwoman Nicole Ackley.
Here.
Councilman Josh Hastings.
Here.
Councilman Joe Holloway.
Here.
Councilman Bill McCain.
Here.
County staff, Wayne Strasburg, Director of Emergency Services. Dave Shipley. Moving on, Jamie Dykes, State's Attorney.
Here.
Thank you. Assistant State's Attorney, Bill McDermott.
Here.
Guest, Mr. Bill Chambers, President and CEO of the Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce.
Here.
Ms. Amanda Pollak, City of Salisbury Public Works Director.
Here.
Ms. Alexis Laws.
Here.
For the individuals who are participating, please identify yourselves when speaking to the public, so everyone knows who is talking. Before, again, I'd like to thank everyone for their patience as we go through changing the structure of our council meetings. A majority of the council members decided that we moved forward by doing video conferencing using Zoom during the coronavirus pandemic. The public cannot attend the meetings in person, but it is in real time on local public access channel PAC 14 and on the internet at PAC14.org or on PAC14. The public may listen to the meeting by telephone by calling the number shown at the agenda, on the agenda, and entering the meeting ID number. After the meeting, it will be replayed on PAC 14, YouTube, and the county's website. Okay, now we're gonna start with approval of the consent agenda. I need a motion and a second. Got a motion by Vice President Cannon. I need a second. I didn't hear you.
Second.
By who?
Bill McCain.
Okay, if everyone could remember to say your name, because sometimes it's hard to pick up who's saying what. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor by roll call for each council member. Ernie Davis.
Aye.
Nicole Ackley.
Aye.
Josh Hastings.
Aye.
John Cannon.
Aye.
Bill McCain.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The consent agenda passes unanimously.
I'll vote aye too, Larry.
I skipped here. I put my glasses on. I jumped right over. Consent. Alright, right now I have a proclamation of World Autism Awareness Month. And Ms. Alexis Laws should be the recipient. So this is for World Autism Awareness Month. Whereas autism spectrum disorder is a neurological and developmental disorder that affects communication and behavior, and is an urgent public health crisis that demands support from all levels of government. Whereas symptoms of autism may present themselves in a variety of combinations, and can result in lifelong impairment of an individual's ability to learn, develop, healthy interactive behavior, and understand verbal and nonverbal communication. And whereas for disease control and prevention reports that one in 59 children aged 18 had been identified with autism spectrum disorder. And whereas Wycomico County is committed to ensuring that people living with autism have access to lifelong care and services to their full potential. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council is honored to take part in the annual observance of Autism Awareness Month and World Autism Awareness Day, in the hope that it will lead to a better understanding of this disorder. Done the seventh day of April 2020, signed by the entire county council. Thank you, and this will be mailed to Ms. Laws.
Thank you. First and foremost, on behalf of the community, I really want to thank the county council for acknowledging Autism Awareness Month. I am truly so honored to be selected to receive this proclamation. Just as you said, this month represents the one in 54 children in America that are diagnosed with an autism spectrum disorder. Even more than that, it represents all the families that are supporting those individuals. And now with the backing of this proclamation, this month represents the community's support of these individuals. Spreading awareness of autism guarantees that as a community, our knowledge will grow, our understanding will grow, and even more importantly, our compassion will grow. County Council, thank you so much for acknowledging the significance of this month, and for understanding the effect that autism has on our community, as well as the effect that our community has on those diagnosed with autism. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Laws, and this will be mailed to you. Ms. Hurley?
Good evening, Council President, council members, and to those ladies and gentlemen joining us by audio conference. The first item on the agenda this evening is Resolution Number 22-2020, to establish special procedures for the conduct of council meetings and work sessions during the emergency period regarding the COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic. The purpose of this resolution is to lay out some procedures for conducting council meetings remotely during the COVID-19 health emergency. This will allow for council members to have meetings by telephone or video conference, providing a public notice is given in advance of the meeting. It also allows for council to conduct meetings in person, but to exclude the public from attending in person with proper public notice. The council administrator may conduct a poll of the council members to decide in advance how the council would like to meet, and will publish the agenda with proper notification on how the public may observe or listen to the meeting. And finally, the council may suspend the in-person public comments and public hearing on proposed legislative action, and may decide instead to accept written public comments to be read during the council meeting. Given the current situation with the coronavirus and the social distancing guidelines, Mr. Bob Taylor and I have worked together to come up with these proposed procedures for council's consideration.
Okay, need a motion to approve Resolution Number 22-2020 and a second by name.
Joe Holloway.
Joe Holloway makes a motion. Who made the second?
John Cannon.
Second, Josh Hastings.
Alright, got John Cannon first. Any discussion? With no discussion?
Mr. Cannon, or Mr. Dodd, pardon me, this is Robert Taylor.
Yes, sir.
I do have a proposed amendment to that that I didn't think of when we were drafting this. And I think Laura sent it out to council this morning. And basically, what it would be would be an additional item. It would be item five. And it would read as follows: Promptly after each such event, the council administrator shall provide to each member who participated from a remote location a written synopsis of each matter, including amendments, that was passed or failed to pass, indicating how he or she voted or abstained, which the member shall review and correct as may be appropriate, and sign and return to the council administrator, including by email, for attachment to the minutes of the meeting. And the purpose of this is to provide the assurance of voting that we have in a normal meeting where the members are physically present, and you can essentially watch them and hear them vote, which we don't have for certain on a remote meeting. Make a motion to amend Resolution 22-2020 as stated.
Got a motion by Mr. Cannon. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
The second by?
Joe Holloway.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor of the amendment? By roll call, by each council member. Ernie Davis?
Aye.
Nicole Ackley? Nicole Ackley?
Screen's frozen.
Okay, Josh Hastings?
Aye.
Joe Holloway?
Aye.
John Cannon?
Aye.
Bill McCain?
Aye.
And a recall for Nicole Ackley? Okay, moving on, the chair votes aye.
Can I say something?
Yes.
Larry, you got a bad echo when you talk.
He needs to close the door.
I understand that, and I was gonna say that, because the echo is coming back, and it sounds like somebody's trying to say something while I'm speaking.
Yes, every time you speak, it's something in your room.
Okay, Larry, close that door then.
We'll get this figured out one of these days, that way. Yep. Larry, are you using two devices? It sounds like you're using two devices. Do you have your phone and laptop going? Yeah, it sounds like you're getting reverb.
Got two devices opened up.
If you have two going, you might just have to mute one of them.
Okay, is that any better?
Yes.
A lot better.
Okay, thank you. Got the doors closed and the volume turned down some, so hopefully that'll work, because that was getting to me as well. Like I said, it sounded like people were talking, trying to say something, whatever, when I was speaking. Okay, with that said, the motion passes. Right before we proceed to the public hearings, my understanding that the county council may suspend Rule 5 of the Rules of Legislative Procedure requiring an in-person public hearing on legislative bills. Is that correct, Mr. Taylor?
Larry?
Yes, sir.
We voted on the amendment to that last resolution. I don't think we've had the vote yet on the resolution as amended.
That's correct. We have not.
Okay, you're right. We skipped it, and in lieu of everything that was going on here. Okay, now I need a motion. We already have a motion and a second, so all in favor by roll call, starting again with Ernie Davis.
Aye.
Nicole Ackley?
I would like to excuse myself from the vote. I lost connection and missed what we're saying.
Okay, Josh Hastings?
Aye.
Joe Holloway?
Aye.
John Cannon?
As amended, aye.
Bill McCain?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, resolution as amended. And again, I'll read this again. Before you proceed to the public hearings, my understanding that the council may suspend Rule 5 of the Rules of Legislative Procedure requiring an in-person public hearing on legislative bills. Is that correct, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Need a motion to suspend Rule 5 of the Rules of Legislative Procedure requiring an in-person public hearing on legislative bills, and to allow for public comments to be provided in writing on legislative matters, and a second by name. So I need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion, Bill McCain.
Joe Holloway will do a second.
And a second by Joe Holloway. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote again for each member. Ernie Davis?
Aye.
Nicole Ackley?
Aye.
Josh Hastings?
Aye.
Joe Holloway?
Aye.
John Cannon?
Aye.
Bill McCain?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion passed unanimously. Alright, this time, Mr. Taylor, time for a public hearing?
I guess with the public hearings having been waived, it would just be essentially second reading. At least on the, actually on this first bill, which is Legislative Bill 2020-01, it is not second reading. It is only being introduced tonight. It is labeled as an emergency bill, and it is an act to amend the Wycomico County Classification and Pay Plan by adding positions in the state's attorney's office. And I can go on further if you want me to. The bill's in the briefing book. I do have some concerns about it, and there is also, as I understand it, some desire to amend the bill to provide that these positions are temporary.
Okay.
As far as the emergency aspect of it, the charter requires that there be some specification of what the emergency is in specific terms, not just the general terms that are in the bill as it's written. And I think that that probably should come from the state's attorney's office. If there is a valid emergency here. If there's not, then I think the bill should probably just be passed as a normal bill. So that, I guess, is the first aspect of it, and then if council wants to get into the concerns that were expressed earlier in an earlier meeting regarding the temporary nature of the positions, we can go over that, and I've suggested some language for that purpose.
Oh, Mr. Taylor, Bill McCain, a quick question. You made the comment, if it's quote "not an emergency" would just be a normal bill, how would that change this process if any?
Well, it would extend it. It would extend out the time when the bill becomes effective. It would be, check me on this, Laura, if I'm wrong, it would be approximately 60 days from today, I think, wouldn't it?
This is Laura Hurley. It would be 60 days from the date that the county executive signs the bill. And just for clarification, this bill was introduced on March 3. So what we're having tonight is the second reading in the public hearing on it.
Okay, this is Bill McCain. Thank you. Yeah, I was just more curious as if that changed the process for any reason as far as considering this, but it doesn't. It only would change the timing of when it would go into effect. So thank you.
If it's done as emergency, it would go into effect the day the county executive signs the bill. If it's not emergency, then it goes into effect 60 days after the county executive signs the bill.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Hurley, do we have any public comments on this bill? You have no comments on Legislative Bill 2020-01? Okay, this concludes the public hearing.
No, I have another question. I don't know if we do it.
Comments after we vote?
During comments?
Yeah, after we make a motion? Alright, need a motion to approve Legislative Bill 2020-01 in a second.
I'll make a motion. It's Joe Holloway.
Got a motion by Joe Holloway?
Well, Josh Hastings.
Josh Hastings with the second. Yes, Mr. McCain?
I guess my question is, though, are we, the amendments we were alluding to a second ago, can we still make those amendments, or do we have to make those amendments now before we vote?
I guess we have to make those amendments before we vote, don't we?
That's what I was thinking. Right, right. We were gonna discuss the amendments, but now we've...
Yeah, yes, you would want to make the amendments before you vote on the final bill.
Right, yeah. So, yeah, I still have, yes, I still have questions or discussion regarding the amendments.
Yes, sir.
Yep. Mr. Taylor, I guess there was two amendments that were being talked about. One was the, just having language describing the emergency situation, which I think that's pretty easy from the state's attorney's office. I think that's pretty easy. I know Mr. Taylor has suggested some language regarding, around the issue of the temporary nature. I think, Ms. Dykes, I think you might have language addressing, you and Mr. McDermott, you have language addressing that?
So we received last night Mr. Taylor's concerns and his suggestions. We were able to take a look at it and address them. We don't have anything finalized, Councilman McCain, but we were working on it, and if that's a concern of the council generally, I'm happy to provide some amendments, but we're not finished with them yet.
This is John Cannon. I think it could be just a simple statement, and Mr. Taylor, they would need guidance from legal, who is, I say you, since you're familiar with the processes of legislative bills. The terminology is very simple, so that this could, so it could match the requirement. Could you state what the requirement is, Mr. Taylor, such as for health, et cetera, et cetera?
Well, but, yeah, that's the general language.
I know, but in order to, in order to recognize...
And that's in the bill. That's in the bill right now, that general language. If you'll give me just a second here, although I'm opening the charter.
Thank you, Bob. Yes, I think it would fall in line with the welfare of the county. It's not a health issue. It would be the safety and welfare, Jamie. And Jamie doesn't necessarily have to put this together. I think any of us could put it together, because this clearly falls in line with the aspect of safety and the welfare. I don't know how to script what you want to get. Yeah, what the charter says, it has that general language in it that's already in the bill. But then beyond that, it says that after the enacting clause, a declaration stating that the emergency exists and describing the claimed emergency in clear and specific terms. And that's more than the general language that's in there now. That would be some specification in actual facts of what the emergency is, not just the general notion that there's an emergency. Maybe we could state something to the effect that, due to the fact that this could lead to a number of incarcerated individuals to be released, to some extent, however you might phrase it, Jamie, that is the importance of having this bill as emergency legislation, to avoid having too many, the release of those that might be incarcerated.
I agree with the cannon.
Yeah, I would point out right now that the courts are pretty much closed.
May I add?
Ms. Dykes?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your comments, Vice President Cannon and President Dodd. I agree that that is the nature of the emergency, the relief, the likely relief. We're not able to adequately address these prosecutions and, in fact, retry these cases. I'm, of course, always happy to be helpful to the council. You'll have to excuse me that I'm not an expert in legislative law, but I'm happy to help draft some language in that way. You hit the nail on the head.
So I guess the terminology would have to be something to the effect of the safety and welfare of the county is at risk due to the...
The obstruction of justice in...
The reality is that these cases will have to be retried, and if they're not retried, if we don't have the resources to retry them, that it would. Do you have a suggestion, Mr. McDermott?
No, I, Vice President, I think you summarized it pretty well. I think it's also more maybe to Councilwoman Ackley's point, too, that we're not just talking about the release of individuals who may be incarcerated. We're talking about promoting, we're asking for resources that are in the interests of justice all around, because while some dangerous people may be released, we're also talking about an integral review of those cases in which perhaps defendants were entitled to things that they didn't receive. And so I don't want to limit it just to the release of potentially dangerous people. We're talking about preserving our justice system as a whole, which I think is, like you said, in the welfare and safety of the county.
Any other discussions?
Well, that's, oh, that's one amendment. The other amendment that Mr. Taylor was referencing is the one around the language he had sent us, which I'm sitting here looking at the email. I'm not sure this is the exact language verbatim we want to be using. I think certainly parts of this we want to be incorporating into the piece of legislation. I mean, I don't know if I should read this, or Mr. Taylor, if you want to summarize your suggestions as far as the, you know, the fact this is like, you know, that the state's attorneys always would, you know, need to come before us to, you know, give us some summary as to the certification that this continuing need still exists due to the fact that we're doing this as emergency legislation for a specific need. You know, there should be something in here saying that this, you know, it's likely to go for a long time, but they still need to come before us to justify that this need still exists.
Let me say this, that shortly after, I think it was the last meeting, I did send, it was an email dated March 20, and I guess it didn't get over to the state's attorney's office, but I know it got to certain people, at least some on the council, because I've seen their replies. And basically, it indicated that there should be some specification of the emergency, which we've already discussed. And then it provided for specimen language to be used regarding the temporary nature of the positions, and that was based on council's discussion, as I understood it. I can read those if you want me to. There's three provisions. One is provided that, number one, these are temporary positions for funding by the county for a limited period in which their services are needed because of the, and at this point, we would insert the language that's going to be used to describe the emergency, whatever that may be. And number two, in any budgetary request for such funding, and in the county's budget and any amendment thereof, appropriating money that may be used for such funding, they shall be identified as temporary positions with specific reference to this bill. That's the first. The second is, further provided that each budgetary request for money that may be used for such funding shall include a certification by the state's attorney discussing the continuing need for services that require such funding and the estimated likely duration thereof. That's the second. The third is, further provided as a condition precedent to the expenditure for the salary or employment benefits of these positions, of any money heretofore or hereafter appropriated by the council, that the person who receives such salary and/or benefits shall have executed a written acknowledgement that he or she has received and read a copy of this bill and understands that the position is temporary, not permanent in nature, and that the document has been furnished to the county's finance department. That's the third item. So that would be, I think, covering the waterfront, so to speak, of the concerns that were suggested at the meeting.
Okay, State's Attorney Dykes, it looks like you're...
Yes.
Say something.
Thank you. I first like to say, and I don't want to belabor the point, because we've talked about this at, in our March council meeting, and I don't want to waste anybody's time. I will say that I will not be able to hire a single person with the language of number three. That is untenable. Our, we must have high-quality candidates, and the only way...
And the only way that we get high-quality candidates is some expectation that their duty will continue. It's, we would have to pay such a premium for a qualified person in that respect that it's untenable. What I will say is that I come before all of you every year for my budget request and to make those justifications. This office, under my tenure, has had minimal increases. I do not make this ask lightly. I am a citizen of this county, and I understand the cost. This is, our times now are different than ever before. As to my prosecutors, each and every one of those prosecutors is at will. If you don't fund, if I come before you, and I don't, I, I am happy to account to you yearly basis, on a weekly basis, on a daily basis, what is being handled and what these three people will be responsible for. I'm all about data. I'm happy to give all of that to you whenever you want. But the idea is, is that we restore confidence back into our system, and I cannot do that with no guarantee of future employment for these people. It's, it's just simply-
Jamie?
Yes.
Let me step in a minute here. In your office, you have a certain amount of attrition, right? People leave at different times?
Yes.
I understand, I think, your dilemma that you're in. And I don't think you would come to us and ask us for this if you really need it. I will, I'm fine with your request. And I think that in the future, that, you know, through attrition in your office, people retire. If this workload whitens in the future, that, you know, your budget will go down as far as employees or your amount of your employees will go down somewhat. So would that play into this?
Yes, it absolutely does. I mean, we're responsible spenders of county dollars. And if there becomes a need, there might not be a need, you know? But that, that might not be a need is five or 10 years out. I mean, these cases that will be retried are violent felonies that are going to take months to prepare for, days to try. And the number is, it's in the hundreds, is what we anticipate.
This, this is Bill McCain. The, Mr. Taylor, or Jamie, you had mentioned about, you know, item three. And frankly, when the email was sent out with these three suggestions, I had actually responded and said that I didn't like item number three, that last part. I mean, I was fine with item one and two, because I think that describes the situation. And so, I mean, I'm fine with an amendment that just includes paragraphs one and two, which also inserts the previous, the previous amendment we were talking about sort of gets inserted there because it gives the, it describes the emergency reference, the reason for we're doing this. And then the only thing we'd be asking of the state's attorney's office is that each budgetary request for money that may be used for such funding shall include a certification by the state's attorney discussing the continuing need for services that require such funding and the estimated likely duration thereof, which is probably going to be pretty long-term. So that's pretty simplistic. That's really, you come to us annually anyhow. You know, that's just really a reporting to us annually as you would normally with the budget. It doesn't have to, you know, it's not weekly or daily, obviously. It's just once a year. So I'd be fine with that.
I would, I would say, I don't see the need for this. I haven't heard a motion. It's been introduced yet. We're in general discussion, I understand. But I don't think it's necessary. I don't see why it has to be established as temporary. I understand what the state prosecutor's trying to say. They'll be coming before the council every year. And at that point in time, the council can decide whether this is going to be a temporary position or not. But if you can't, you can't enter into this under any circumstances as if these positions are temporary. No one will, no one will respond. You will not be able to hire anyone. So I don't see an amendment on the, Mr. President, if there is an amendment and a second to this, and I would say continue the discussion or else move on.
Well, my only response to that, Mr. Cannon, this is Bill McCain, would be if we're not going to amend this like it is, then we don't need, we don't even need this. Let's just do it in the legislative process. Let's just fund these positions. What you're saying is we're going to make these permanent positions. Well, if that's the case, then this isn't a temporary, this, this whole piece of legislation is to deal with, even though it's, the verbiage is temporary situation, which we all know is going to be long-term. We don't need, this isn't an emergency then. If we're going to add three permanent positions, which is what you're saying, and if that's, I understand if there's a need for three permanent positions. So let's just simply do it in the budget process, not introduce a piece of legislation to deal with a- What everybody's saying is we're going to do a permanent funding of these positions for a temporary situation. Well, that's mixing apples and oranges. It's got to be one or the other. It's either got to be this legislation with amendments or it's just simply not emergency legislation. And we just do it, we just add these positions as part of the budget process.
The purpose of adding this as emergency legislation is because they want to begin immediately with the investigator. And that's why this is emergency legislation.
Right, for a temporary situation.
Ms. Dykes?
Temporary or not, it's a matter of semantics. All we're trying to do is get these positions established today and move forward. If we eliminate them next year, we eliminate them next year.
That's correct. I agree with that. Ms. Ackley, were you trying to say something?
Yeah, I just had a question for Ms. Dykes. Do you, do you see this as being, when we say temporary, temporary as in like six months, temporary as being five years? I mean,
It, it's, it's hard for us to say, Councilwoman Ackley. It is at a minimum five years. That's my best estimate. At a minimum, it's, it's five years temporary.
Okay.
I would, I would suggest we move forward unless there's an amendment to this, unless there's an amendment, a second to this.
Did anyone make a motion or an amendment?
No.
I don't recall that. Okay, any further discussion?
I'll make, this, this is Bill McCain. I'll make a motion to amend the legislation with the, and I'll read the language. But, and I'll even drop the word temporary. But say that provided that the positions for funding by the county for a limited period in which their services are needed because of the, well, we have to insert the emergency description. In any budgetary request for such funding and in the county's budget, any amendment thereof appropriating money that may be used for such funding, they shall be identified as positions with specific reference to this bill. And further provided each budgetary request for money that may be used for such funding shall include a certification by the state's attorney discussing the continuing need for services that require such funding and the estimated likely duration thereof.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman McCain for a, an amendment. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? With that said, the motion dies.
Mr. President, could I make an amendment? Here we go. I'm going to try this, okay? I can make an amendment, a motion to amend the bill so that it states that the emergency legislation is required to protect the rights of those incarcerated and to prevent the risk of prematurely releasing said individuals, which could possibly create a risk to the community. I'll read that again because it's a lot. And Jamie Dykes, you're going to have to let me know how the verbiage works for you. Emergency legislation is required to protect the rights of those incarcerated and to prevent the risk of prematurely releasing said individuals, which could possibly create a risk to the community. That, I hope, could address the emergency legislation matter.
Okay, we have a motion by Vice President Cannon. Do we have a second on that amendment?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second by Councilwoman Joe Holloway. Do we have any-
Before we, before we vote, I'd like to hear Jamie's response to that, though.
Yes, or Ms. Dykes?
Thank you. I'm, I believe that sums up perfectly, Vice President Cannon, the emergency, although of course I'm not an expert in legislation, but that's exactly what we're trying to do, and it impacts the safety and welfare of the community. Yes, it's acceptable to me.
Okay. And again, I think the purpose of the emergency legislation is so that you, you may begin immediately with an investigator?
Yes.
And you're funding that as is from your department now? You would be funding that right now?
Yes, and I have the funds to fund that through the end of the fiscal year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more discussion on this? Okay, we have a motion and a second on amendment to legislative bill 202001. Roll call, vote. Ernie Davis.
Aye.
Nicole Ackley.
Aye.
Josh Hastings.
Aye.
Joe Holloway.
Aye.
John Cannon.
Aye.
Bill McCain.
Aye on the amendment.
And the chair votes aye. The amendment passed unanimously. Now, we have a, a motion and a second for legislative bill 202001. Roll call, Ernie Davis.
Mr. Dodd, this is Laura Hurley. Before you do that, there, I had actually submitted an email to everyone as well regarding the position titles and the pay grades. I think it's that those titles and pay grades match the job description that the Department of Human Resources has on file. So I didn't know if that's something that council would want to consider as well.
I would, Ms. Hurley, thank you. I would entertain a motion to amend legislation to strike two prosecutors and replace it with assistant state's attorney with the prosecution integrity unit at pay grade 19. I would also, part of this amendment would also strike one special investigator and replace it with special investigator with the prosecution integrity unit at pay grade 19.
Okay, we have a motion to amend by Council, Vice President Cannon. Do we have a second?
Second, Josh Hastings.
Got a second by Councilman Josh Hastings. Do we have any discussion?
Thank you, Ms. Hurley.
Okay, with no further discussion, we'll have a vote on this amendment. Ernie Davis.
Aye.
Nicole Ackley.
Aye.
Josh Hastings.
Aye.
Joe Holloway.
Aye.
John Cannon.
Aye.
Bill McCain.
Aye on the amendment.
And chair votes aye on the amendment. The amendment passes unanimously, and so does the bill. Ms. Hurley, do you have anything further?
I think you need to do a vote on the bill as amendment.
We can do another vote on the bill as amendment, as amended. Ernie Davis.
Aye.
Nicole Ackley.
Aye.
Josh Hastings.
Aye.
Joe Holloway.
Aye.
John Cannon.
Aye.
Bill McCain.
Opposed.
And the chair votes aye. Ms. Hurley, have one opposition. The bill passes.
Thank you.
Anything further, Ms. Hurley?
No, that's all I have for that one.
Yeah, one more legislative bill. Thank you to the state's attorney's office.
Thank you all. Please stay safe and healthy, and I'll see you soon, hopefully.
Thank you.
Have a nice Easter.
You too.
Okay, we have a second hearing on a legislative bill. Do you want to read this, Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, this would be, I guess, again, we've waived the public hearing on this, so it would just be second reading.
Right.
This was introduced March 17 by the council president. It's an act to extend the moratorium on the issuance of building permits for an agricultural storage tank, which will store dissolved airflowation, in parenthesis, DAF, close parenthesis, wash-down water from a rendering process pursuant to, by Comico Code, Comico County Code, chapters 225, 125, and 128.
Okay. Ms. Hurley, do you have any written comments from the public?
I do, I have one written comment. This is from Kenneth Robinson, Comico County. "Front door of my home is 400 yards from the chicken gut soup tank that has been built and is in operation. I have been lied to continuously from the beginning of this project. The county has also been lied to and from beginning on the application in regards to the non-titled wetlands issue. Less than one acre disturbed. Chicken soup would only be spread on owner's property, et cetera. Myself and our neighbors had no chance to state our objections because the good old boy network took care of Mr. Burns through the application process. We were also sent from one agency, county, state, federal, to another until weeks of calls were sent back to the agency we first contacted, with still no answers. We've been told continuously that this is an agricultural product, but in your own public notice of this meeting in the Daily Times, you called it washed-down water from a rendering process. This suggests a commercial product. Planning and zoning have said that they only approved the tank and have no knowledge or really care what is in the tank or any other tank built. My question is, how can you stop it from being built if you can't ask what is being stored in any tank? So if you can't ask what is in any tank, how can you stop it from being built? I would like to request that a hard copy of the minutes of this hearing be sent to me, be sent to me at the above address."
Okay, any further comments? Okay.
That's all the public comments.
No further public comments. This concludes the public hearing on legislative bill 2020-02. I need a motion to approve legislative bill number 202002. Got a motion by Councilman Hastings, I need a second.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman McCain. Any discussion?
Yes. Councilman Davis, again, I reiterate my last statement that the planning and zoning only approve the tank. They don't improve, approve what goes inside the tank. So this moratorium, we're not, can't stop them from getting a tank built. You can't, they only want to take what goes in there, Department of Agriculture or, or Department Environment. And of course, they're not coming to debate, to make their statement clear. So for us to say, put a moratorium on these daft tanks, there's no such thing as a daft tank. Only thing that the plan and zone approved is a tank. So, I mean, we're wasting our time, this legislation.
Hey, any further discussion?
Yeah, Councilman Hastings, I'd say, I agree with Councilman Davis is, we definitely need to, you know, we've actually, we're in the process to try to get more answers from the state when our virus situation worsened. But we're not going to let up on that. I think that we do need to evolve this situation, and we do need to have real answers to what Mr. Robinson has written into his, of the con-
Okay, any more discussion?
Well, just, this isn't so much discussion, it's a quick comment. Just, I just want to clarify that, you know, in this legislation or this extension, if it's approved, you know, it states in there that the county council needs additional time to consider possible amendments to the Comico County Code, chapters 22, 25, 125, and 128, to address the concerns about the permitting process-
about the permitting process of daft, washed down, storage facilities. I mean, we need to get that, you know, if this does get extended, we definitely need to start discussing that. You know, this last moratorium, you know, not much was done. You know, I think, you know, we did a lot of wait and see, which some of that needs to happen. But, you know, part of this is, you know, we need, we're the legislative body, so we need to figure out as a council, you know, do we have an appetite or are we going to make changes to the county code?
That's a good point, Councilman McCain. Any more discussion?
I agree with Councilman McCain. I think that we need to put this in a work session of how we're going to come up with a resolution.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay, got a motion, second on the floor. I'm going to do a roll call vote for legislative bill twenty twenty dash oh two, starting with Ernie Davis.
So.
Nicole Ackley.
Yes.
Josh Hastings.
Aye.
Joe Holloway.
Yes.
John Cannon.
Aye.
Bill McCain.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye with one opposition, Ms. Hurley. So legislative bill twenty twenty dash oh two passes with one opposition. Ms. Hurley.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have discussion with Mr. Bill Chambers, President and CEO of Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce, on how local businesses are impacted by the coronavirus, also known as COVID nineteen. Mr. Chambers, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Good evening, Council President Dodd, Vice President Cannon, and members of the Council, Bill Chambers, President and CEO of the Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce. Needless to say, we're in the midst of a historic crisis for business. This is impacting every business on the shore. We've been in contact with hundreds of businesses the last couple of weeks. Everyone on the lower shore, Southern Delaware, the eastern shore of Virginia, especially with questions about the federal aid packages that have come out. Let me just say, we're reaching out as well to all of our members and we're fielding and answering and making connections for all businesses, not just members of the chamber. We've opened the chamber up as a resource for all businesses. The GSC, led by Mike Dunn and Dave Ryan with SWEAD. We have all three been working very closely together the last three weeks. Couple of things we've already done. We've had a couple of very, very intense webinars with the John Hickman at SBDC on the CARE Act, which was passed a week ago, a week ago this Friday. Many provisions in that CARE Act, a lot of questions. I'll go over a couple of quick things just for everyone's interest. The Maryland Small Business COVID Emergency Relief Grant closed yesterday. Anyone that have applications submitted in their portal had to complete those applications by five P M. today. So obviously, we have a need for more state money when it comes to that particular fund. On the SBA programs, questions from sole proprietors, both the EIDL program, which is the Emergency Disaster Relief Program from the SBA, as well as the Payroll Protection Plan. There are provisions for sole proprietors in there, as well as ten ninety-nine folks. That was added in, that's a good thing. Questions from employers. If you're employed and you're, excuse me, if you're an employer and you're paying into the unemployment insurance fund, you're eligible for those loan programs, very, very important. We'll continue on educational fronts. We did a, the first of a three-part series on these loan programs and ways and strategies for businesses to try and be prepared when the all-clear signal is given, whatever that's going to look like. That webinar series started today at eleven thirty with Beacon at Salisbury University, Dr. Deriker. We'll continue next Tuesday and the following Tuesday. We'll also be doing another SBDC web, excuse me, webinar with John Hickman next week. We're going to, there've been clarifications and some guidance changes on these loan programs. We're going to be working with.
We lost him.
Yeah. Bill, you're muted. Can you unmute him, Laura?
Yeah, I'm trying to, but for some reason it's on his end, not mine.
Bill. We're there? Yeah, we got you now.
You were muted, Bill, we lost half of it.
All right, let me just go back and say, the webinar series, we'll be doing, we had the first of a three-part series today with, hosted by Beacon at Salisbury University with Dr. Deriker. This three-part series is really geared for all organizations and businesses on how to best utilize the current relief packages and strategies to hopefully dig our way out of this once the all-clear signal is given, whatever that's going to look like and whenever that happens. On the SBA programs, you've got the Payroll Protection Plan Program, which is out there. I would encourage businesses, utilize your existing banker to help you take care of that application process. Most banks on the shore now have been deputized by the SBA, so they are able to handle the PPP and the Emergency Disaster Assistance Loan, the EIDL Federal Loan. Go to your banker. If your application's been submitted, you should hear something within seventy-two hours. If you don't, you need to reach out. Maybe there was something incomplete on your application. We're really pushing our federal partners to get these checks, these payments, these deposits into the accounts of small businesses and organizations in no more than ten to twenty days. The feedback we're getting from businesses on the shore is the ones that can hold out can really only hold out until the end of April. They need this money now. There was a conference call today with Senator Carden, Senator Van Hollen, and we stressed heavily, these payments must be expedited. As I said to them, I understand that government's all about checks and balances, but this is an unprecedented historical issue. I think we're going to have to dispense with some of the checks and balances for the time being to get this money into the hands of businesses. These federal programs are designed to try and help businesses and keep people employed and not on the unemployment.
I think he muted himself again.
Small Business COVID Emergency Relief Grant that closed yesterday, it's full, it's sold out, so to speak. If a business or an organization had an application in their portal, they had today to finalize it and complete it. So we're going to be pushing our state leaders to re-energize that fund. It literally crashed their site last Friday. It was not good. I also want to mention, we're working very closely with Mike Dunn at the Greater Salisbury Committee, Dave Ryan at Salisbury Economic Development. We'll be putting in place some programs and opportunities for businesses to get some information on how to get a leg up once we get the all-clear signal on this issue. When it comes to our state and federal partners' next steps to assist our businesses and organizations, we're recommending strongly that Governor Hogan, by executive order, exempt state sales tax payments for at least the next three months. That's important. We're also recommending heavily that the governor tap into the five hundred million, five hundred million dollar rainy day fund. And that money's needed. It would certainly help backfill this Maryland Small Business COVID Emergency Relief Grant, which is not available anymore. We also are asking for additional state funds in the Emergency Disaster Fund. We're asking the state to consider tax credits for remote workers. And we're also, with the extension of unemployment benefits, we want to be sure that the extension of those unemployment benefits goes without penalty to the employers. That's very, very important. On the federal side, as a part of the information we sent again to Senator Carden, Senator Van Hollen today, we're getting from all of our members and their employees the need to exempt the federal income tax for the rest of the year, through the end of twenty twenty. That puts an average of fifteen percent more in every employee's paycheck that long term, I'm using long, you know, figuratively, nine months, but that extended additional dollars in employed workers' paychecks will make a difference. It was introduced in Package Three that the Trump Administration put forward. It was left out of Package Three. We're urging strongly that our federal leaders put this back in Package Four. We also are urging our federal leaders to include five oh one C six organizations in this next round of relief. And we're also telling our legislators, they need to start working on stimulus packages. These relief packages are holding its own. They're putting the finger in the dyke. We need true stimulus packages so the businesses, when they are back up and running, have the ability to backfill their inventory, have the ability to get dollars to market and promote and advertise their business. That's not part of the relief money, that has to be stimulus money. That's a completely different animal. Last but not least, and kind of related but unrelated, I want to urge the council strongly at this time, let's get the airport water issue resolved. We need to get the pre-annexation agreement done. That is a vital piece of our economy and we cannot allow it to slow down in any way, shape, or form, even given the crisis we're in. I'd be happy to answer any questions or take any comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers.
Thank you.
Hey, Bill, this is Bill McCain. First of all, thank you very much for the update. My question has to do with the Payroll Protection Program. I know like on Friday, some businesses I was talking to, they actually had pretty good success. They were able to, the bank got their applications in and they immediately got back their SBA numbers. I know a lot of the banks were able to submit yesterday, but my understanding was it got so overrun yesterday that they weren't getting their SBA numbers back. Any update on that?
Yes, thank you, Councilman McCain. So Friday, they were overwhelmed. If you were one of the first to get your apps in on Friday, you got your numbers.
Right.
What's happened is that the amount of applications has, it's probably overwhelmed the system. On top of that, some banks were not ready to accept the SBA applications when they opened up last Friday. They were telling businesses, come back and see me next week. So that has also made this week a heavy week for these applications. I've been assured by the federal, our federal partners, legislators, as well as agency folks, that by the end of this week, this backlog should have been resolved. We should, anyone that needs to get that SBA application in should be able to. Again, as I just said, the biggest concern for businesses now is, when will the money get deposited into my account? And it can't be thirty to forty-five days, that's just not going to work, that doesn't cut the mustard. Thank you.
Any more questions?
Bill, I'd only like to comment that I really, you know, we really appreciate you speaking today. This is without a doubt the highest priority for the council. But again, how you've taken the lead on this is amazing, actually. It's, you know, you were representing the lower eastern shore, really, in your talks with the governor and your talks with the senators. I know that you've been talking to the Maryland Chamber, you've been in Annapolis several times. I have, I know you had two Zoom conferences today alone and I've sat in on others with you as well. So I know that you, this is, this is your third one. So I really appreciate what you, what you are doing. You know, great resource for the businesses on the eastern shore and means an awful lot for those of us in Comico County because this is a high fire to get in the economic, you know, engine running again. So thank you.
Well, thank you, thanks, Mr. Vice President. I would just say, in conclusion, we have a real opportunity here to shine as a community, as a county, all of our municipalities. This is an opportunity to really step up. And when we step up in times like this, it leaves a lasting mark. So I would urge everyone amidst the doom and gloom, amidst the health issues and the economic catastrophe that we're in the middle of, this is an opportunity for all of our elected leaders and all leaders in the community to step up and leave a mark that makes such a difference on this community. We'll look back on this fifty years ago as a real stepping stone to whatever we've achieved between now and then.
I would add too, Bill, that if you need council members for testimony, if you need the council as a whole to issue any type of letters of support, let us know because we'd be glad to help you.
We will take you up on that. We're working on something now. Mike Dunn, Dave Ryan, and I would love to have your signatures as well.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers. Ms. Hurley?
Mr. Chambers.
Ms. Ackley.
Mr. Chambers.
Yes, Ms. Ackley.
I said, I have a very quick question. Thank you for having the webinars. I greatly appreciate you putting that together. I've had, I've directed several citizens in that direction.
Thank you.
An unusual circumstance I have in my district is Wi-Fi. And I was wondering if there's an alternative means for for citizens to contact you if they have a small business and their wife and they don't have a wireless connection.
We're answering phone calls at the chamber, so we're all on duty. We're not in the office, obviously, we're not violating the governor's directive, but we're answering our calls. So if you call our number, four one zero seven four nine zero one four four, you will get a call back. You'll, and you could direct your calls to me or any of the staff members. But to follow up on that, Councilwoman, twenty-five billion dollars in this relief package, number three, is earmarked for rural broadband. And to dovetail on what Councilman Cannon just said, we, all of you, our lower shore delegation, need to get real squeaky when it comes to getting our fair share of that twenty-five billion for the shore to extend broadband to underserved areas. We need to get our noses in that fast. That may be a letter we need to send sooner than later.
We did have some legislation passed this past session on rural broadband, but it's a five-year plan, so hopefully we can work together on getting that expedited.
Absolutely, that's the chop tank bill. Yeah, this twenty-five billion is earmarked for rural areas. We just need to make sure we get our piece of that too.
Okay, great, thank you.
We're long overdue with Wi-Fi. Thank you, Ms. Ackley. Any more questions before we move on?
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Ms. Hurley.
Next is discussion with Mr. Wayne Strasberg, Director of Administration, on how Comico County operations are being impacted by the coronavirus. Mr. Strasberg is joining us by audio tonight.
Good evening, everybody. Pleased to be with you. We have authorized teleworking where it's feasible and with department head approval. I'll go through each department with you to give you a status, if you will, of what their operational profile is right now. I'll start with corrections. Corrections is at normal staffing. They're operating under video visitation only. Any new intakes are isolated and must wear protective masks. We are also on a limited lockdown at the correctional facilities so that we are allowing a certain portion of our detainees out for exercise for a thirty-minute period and then they go back into their pods. The Sheriff's Department is at normal operation status, as is EMS. What I would tell you is that biggest need for corrections, Sheriff's Department, and EMS, along with our fire and ambulance departments, is personal protective equipment. And it's very, very, very short, very, very hard to obtain. But on our four o'clock call each day, our fire chiefs, our sheriff's deputies, our ambulance crews remind us that that protective equipment is really needing. David Shipley and David Fitzgerald are doing the best they can to obtain the supplies, but they're limited all across the country. The landfill is open, however, the brush pile is closing each day at six P M. Recycling right now is challenging because inmate labor isn't available, but our convenience centers are open. Our roads department is undertaking normal operations. I was reassured today, I was concerned about, we're getting to the point in time of the year when we start our road resurfacing projects. And I was assured today that, given the current status, those road resurfacing projects should not be interfered with, that we should be able to proceed with our planned road resurfacing. At the airport, Piedmont's flight schedule has changed. They have eliminated one flight to Philadelphia. The three flights to Charlotte are still operating, although I'll tell you that the loads incoming and outgoing are light. We have posted the governor's, Mr. Taylor provided us with language. We have posted at the entrance ways to the, to the airport and the exits of the airport and at the rental car counter. The governors noticed. and at the rental car counter, the governors notice to Marylanders who are traveling out of state and to folks who are flying in from other states, reminding them that they have to self-quarantine for 14 days and reminding them of the penalties that are associated with not abiding by that border. In finance, essential operations are covered. A lot of those folks, their work lends itself to teleworking. Same thing with the human resources department, same thing with our purchasing department. The youth and civic center is closed to the public. Programs and events have been suspended until this pandemic has subsided. Tourism, our visitor center is closed until this subsides. Parks, our trails are open, our parks are closed and we have removed the basketball nets, backboards and tennis court nets based on guidance that was provided to us by the governor's office. General service, we're continuing with normal operations. The nursing home, visitation has been suspended. The health department assessed every patient in the nursing home last Wednesday to determine whether or not we had any individuals there might be in need of COVID testing. Fortunately, we did not identify anybody who met the criteria for testing. So that was a big relief to us. And with that, if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Hey, Wayne?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, thanks for joining us. The nursing home, has there been any attempt to do, by the staff to do like a Zoom situation with any of the patients, say that if their family members could connect with them? Has there been any, any inroads in that?
Video visitation, you mean, Joe?
Yeah.
Yeah. Let me check with Mary. Yeah, yeah, let me check with Mary tomorrow.
That might be a help, you know, if a nurse or a, they take, take, you know, take one of these Zoom issues down there to them and.
Yeah, let me, let me look into whether or not we have the, you know, the IT capability of doing that over there. I'll do that first thing tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
That might be a relief to some of the folks.
Sure, no, that's a terrible situation. I understand the family's angst with not being able to visit, you know, with their loved ones and their loved ones are some of the people who are at most risk for this virus being serious. So I take that to heart, I'll follow up on it.
Wayne, any more comments?
Yes, Wayne's John Cannon. Thanks also, as Joe said, for being here. The overview of the department heads is great. You don't have to really give them too much, many specifics right now, but I'm assuming that we're anticipating that there could be rethinking as far as the capital improvement plan and as far as the budget as a whole is concerned on the impacts of the virus to the community, to the economy.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think that under the current circumstances, with the, the negative impacts on, on the economy, negative impacts on state finances, which will eventually trickle down to county municipalities, we, we will be in a different mode this year with regard to, to the budget. It's going to be much more fluid, I believe, than it has been in past years. We, we are going to particularly take a look at new capital spending. We don't want to suspend or interrupt any significant projects that are underway, like Beaver Run Elementary School, for instance, or the public safety building. But embarking on significant new capital projects, we, we need to get closer to the, the end of June to really ascertain what, what, what does the economy look like? What does the revenue situation look like? Couple of concerns. One is, we know that state income tax receipts are, are going to be negatively impacted. And when they're negatively impacted, our local income tax receipts are negatively impacted. We have seen that the state has allowed filing of your tax return to be extended to July 15th. So that's going to further delay, if you will, distributions from the state because revenue into the state is going to be, to be delayed. Further complicating the matter is the fact that the state, as I think you all know, distributes income taxes to the counties on a, on a lagging basis. So we may not see the impacts of the, the negative trending with state income tax revenue and distributions to the counties until nine to 12 months from now. So I, I think that we all have to be very, very careful with making significant long-term spending decisions until this settles out. And, and I know that you will see that in the, in the upcoming budget message. The executive has included that in the budget message and is very sensitive to, to the, to that issue in particular.
Okay. I, I would only add very quickly, thanks as well, because you and I have had discussions on two particular issues that needed to be addressed. And I'd like to thank you because I'd say within 24 hours, you had those, those issues taken care of and that was, that was excellent.
True, my pleasure, John.
Any more questions? Wayne, I'd like to add something and again, thank you for being here and waiting patiently with us. I do want to add on your comment about police firing EMS and their shortages of PPE. EMS has been trained to use their PPE gloves, et cetera, masks one time and then dispose of it. Now they're being asked to use the equipment over and over again. And we were told yesterday and today that they, by our county health officer, who was the authority, that I think the hospital is using their mask all week long for a week and they're asking EMS providers to do the same. And that's something they're not used to and there is a shortage. And I believe that our deputies don't have the required PPE. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, Larry. Two things, two things have developed late today and I'm trying to get details on both from emergency management services. We, we, we do have the possibility of a linen company supplying us with PPE. And I don't have the necessary details to be able to intelligently talk to you about that this evening, but I'm going to try to have them by tomorrow. The other thing that we're looking at, and this has been set up in Worcester County, Worcester County set up a decontamination tent to be utilized for police cruisers, ambulances, any, any vehicle that has carried either a COVID positive patient or a person under investigation. And we're looking at the, the costs associated with that and how we get that up and running as quickly as we can. Our plan would be to set that up at PRMC. It would be, the cost associated with it would be reimbursed by the federal government, but of course, we would have to forward fund those costs. But I really think that that's something that we should take a very, very serious look at.
Right, and I think you mentioned that the governor stated that the Route 95 Baltimore corridor was declared or he's requesting to declare that as a disaster area and maybe the eastern shore could be declared the same.
Well, the Baltimore, yeah, the Baltimore, Washington corridor, they call it. I call it the metroplex, but the Baltimore, Washington corridor, that, that's where we're really seeing the epicenter of the pandemic. Governor Hogan has requested that President Trump declare that area a federal disaster area. I don't know, Larry, that the eastern shore would yet qualify for that. That's certainly something that we're pursuing.
Right, well, as long as we get reimbursed for this equipment, I think that would suffice for now.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that's my feeling as well. But I will, I've got to discuss this, of course, with the executive once I get better details and then assuming that we want to move forward with it, we'll keep council apprised of what we're doing.
Okay. Any further questions?
Yeah, this is, this is Bob Taylor. At the governor's press conference today, he indicated that 12 counties have been designated, all on the western shore except Queen Anne's.
Yes, that's correct, Bob.
That's the first one on the shore.
That's correct.
Just a thought, Wayne, because, you know, beginning probably this weekend, we're going to start seeing an influx of people from that area because they don't, aren't subject to the, to the governor's order about the 14-day self-quarantine because they're not coming into the state. And of course, a lot of people from that area do have second homes, particularly at the beach.
Yes, sir.
And of course, come the end of the month, then the short-term rental bans in Ocean City and Worcester County are going to end and the beach and boardwalk are going to be open again unless.
Yes, sir.
Further. And I'm just wondering, is there a concern at the hospital? Because it seems to me that that could bring a good bit of infection into this area. We've been very lucky so far. But, you know, the floodgates are going to open here pretty soon.
Yeah, Bob, I don't, I don't disagree with your assessment. I have had that discussion with, with Lori Brewster. She shares that concern and I will tell you that I have had that discussion with the governor's coronavirus response team. And I have suggested that we take further measures with regard to travel onto Del Marva, not only by people from out of the state, but from people who are in that, that epicenter area. Because you're absolutely right, there are a lot of, there are a lot of folks who have beach properties, summer homes, and they will, look, it's human nature. They're going to try to get away from the coronavirus pandemic on the west shore. But with the limited amount of testing kits that we have available, there's no real effective way of screening people who, who are traveling onto Del Marva. I will continue to beat that drum on our weekly calls.
But it also, it also may put PRMC in a very difficult position.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
All right, anything further?
Mr. Strasburg, I had a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Want to comment too. Thank you for being so communicative and, and keeping all of us abreast of what's going on. I really appreciate that. Has there been any discussion with the public school system on additional funding? The additional funding or any type of support they would need to continue the education of distance learning? Whether it go past the April 24th deadline?
Nicole, I have not gotten any requests of that nature from the Board of Education. I was on, actually, I was on the phone, I think it was yesterday. It all runs together with Micah Stouffer and we had a, had a wide-ranging discussion and that didn't come up. So I don't know what their funding status is. And I can't talk intelligently about it right now.
I, I was just, my concern was my district and not having Wi-Fi and how we can support the school system with.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, one of the, one of the concerns, quite frankly, that I have with telelearning is that we have a significant portion of our population who probably don't have computers in their homes and don't have access to high-speed internet. And that poses a real obstacle for a pretty significant part of our population in terms of teleworking and those students being prepared to progress to the next grade level. So that, that, that's a very valid concern.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, any more questions for Mr. Strasburg?
Yes.
Ms. Hastings?
Question. Wayne, the, I know the infection rate for Sussex County is three times that of the lower shore. You mentioned, you know, all that we can do to prevent further folks from coming down across the bed to the lower shore. Are we going to do any more, do you expect any more efforts or any kind of efforts? I know Mayor Day, I didn't read all of it, but I know he did an executive order for Salisbury to prevent folks from coming into stores. Expect any of that, are any further mitigation efforts on the lower shore?
Not at this time. Again, again, Josh, I had a long discussion with, with Steve Schu about, about various issues. And the governor, if you have noticed, the governor clarified in his last two executive orders that this is a health emergency and that the health officer in each county, along with the emergency management director in each county, are to take the lead on whatever further measures need to be taken in their communities. One of the things that we're fully aware of, and you're right, there, there's a higher rate of infection in Delaware than there is on the eastern shore of Maryland. And we know that we've got a pretty significant commuter population that live in this community and work in Delaware, and that is of concern. And I have had that discussion with Steve Schu.
That was a good question, Mr. Hastings. I've asked it a couple of times during our four o'clock conference call and Mr. Strasburg has been on it and he's been in touch with the governor's office and Mr. Schu, like you stated, so I, I'm going to keep asking it. So thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Strasburg? Moving on, Ms. Hurley?
The next slide on the, on the agenda is resolution number 192020. This is to authorize an extension of the declaration of emergency to address issues related to the public health emergency created by COVID-19. And again, we have Mr. Wayne Strasburg, Director of Administration, on the phone by audio. If there are any questions.
Okay, I need a motion to approve resolution number 19-2020. In a second, do I have a motion?
This is Bill McCain, a motion.
This is.
Got a second by Councilman Holloway. Any discussion? That said, moving on to a roll call. Ernie Davis?
Aye.
Nicole Ackley?
Aye.
Josh Hastings?
Aye.
Joe Holloway?
Aye.
John Cannon?
Aye.
Bill McCain?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Resolution number 19-2020 passes unanimously. Ms. Hurley?
And next is resolution number 20-2020. This is to approve a pre-annexation covenant and agreement between Wacombe County and the city of Salisbury and to authorize the county executive to execute the agreement. And we have Ms. Amanda Pollock, Director of the City of Salisbury Public Works Department, on the video conference with us. And again, Mr. Wayne Strasburg participating by audio.
All right, need a motion to approve resolution number 20-2020 in a second.
Bill McCain, I'll make a motion.
Got a motion by Bill McCain. Do I have a second?
I'll second Josh Hastings.
Got a second by Josh Hastings. Any discussion?
Yeah, I would, I would like to, the motion on the table to temporarily stop this vote tonight on this, on this resolution and 2120. And I'll tell you why. I'd like to table it. After news came out this morning, I guess, a lot of people got interested in what was going on in the Killeberney, Wallston, Switch Road area, as well as our fire service in Parsonsburg due to the fact a lot of them didn't know, you know, what the impact of this was going to be. I think it needs, I think we need to reach out. The county executive's office needs to reach out more and explain. West, we're supposed to bring this back to us as a work session and apparently that didn't happen. And I think we're all surprised that this came up as a vote tonight. So I'd like to, I'd like to table these, have a vote to table these two resolutions. And possibly, I know we don't have to have one due to the resolutions, but have public hearings on both of these. I'd like to have a vote on tabling that.
So you're offering.
Joe, hey, Joe, this, or Joe, this is Bill McCain.
Yeah.
I guess my question is, I mean, the, these resolutions are specific to water to the airport.
That's correct.
Period. So, yes, I guess, I guess that's common. So I guess, I guess I'm questioning, then what's the concern? I mean, we've seen this before. Oh, you know, this needs to get moving. This is something that's way behind schedule and it's crucial to our airport. So I guess, you know, this is specific to the airport. So, I mean, do you have concerns about our airport?
They have concerns about people that live between, between Warwick and the airport have concerns. That's the main, that's one of the reasons. You know, there's not been enough reaching out done on this. The people that had the fire service, Parsonsburg Fire Department is very concerned. When you add the annexation word in there, I think that's what lights people up. Because I received a lot of phone calls and emails today.
Right, but what's your, but what's the concern?
Their concern is that they're worried about getting annexed. They want to know. Another concern is, Bill, is they don't like the idea that they're not being able to come and talk to the council in a public forum.
But I guess my only comment, they're not being annexed. You can't be annexed. You have to, you got to request to be annexed.
They don't understand that, Bill. It's not been explained to them properly. If that's, if that's correct, that's not been explained to them.
The thing what he's trying to say, Bill, is that this is supposed to be a second public hearing instead of a vote tonight. We never had a second hearing on it.
Yeah.
Well, I also think, me listening to, or looking at, reading the emails and a lot of the comments that we've got the last few days, it seems to be a lot of folks don't understand. I don't know if a lot of folks understand the original purpose of this. I mean, some of the emails were basically mentioning that we need to, the county needs to be the one to try to bring water to the, to the airport through its own mechanisms. Of course, this started with, you know, I think, fire, correct me if I'm wrong, but that was the fire pressure, the pressure of the water was the original issue. And it seems to be, a lot of folks have gotten lost in, into that. I think the city has said numerous times that they has zero interest whatsoever in creeping that far over. But of course, this is standard protocol for any kind of extension of this utility. So hard to understand. I don't fully understand a lot of the concerns that are out there. Maybe I've missed something, but as a whole, I do agree with, you know, business community, Mr. Chambers and others, that we do need to, this going now, sooner than later, the, the better.
Josh, you say the city doesn't want to go that far. They're across the road. They're at the corner of Walston Switch Road.
This is Wayne. If I could clarify a couple of things. First of all, this is a closed line. The language in the agreement specifically states that there will be no further taps. Second of all...
Wayne, that's incorrect.
Please, please don't interrupt me. Please don't interrupt me. Let me finish, please.
All right.
The, the, the other thing in the pre-annexation agreement is that no annexation can take place for 30 years. The other thing I would say is that the Walston Switch right of way from the intersection of Mount Herman Road to Airport Road is all on airport property. So we're in total control of it.
Wayne?
Joe?
What is in total airport property? What, what did you say that was from where?
From the intersection of Mount Herman Road to Airport Road.
We know that. That's not, that's not what we're talking about.
That's all on airport property.
I understand that. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about the issue of the water running down Walston Switch Road. And when you said it can't be tapped into, that's incorrect because Maryland can approve it to be tapped into. Wacomico County and the city camp, but in, in this agreement, as I was reading it, it says Maryland can approve it if it's requested. The problem is here, Weston was supposed to come back. I know Weston's gone now, for us to have another work session. We haven't had the second work session on it. The other issue is the citizens in that side of the county, when they heard about this pre-annexation agreement, they do not know exactly what that means. And I think that we need to have public hearings on this. Or you can have a town hall if you would wish to explain to the people that are concerned about it. That's why I'm putting it on the table, asking for a vote to table.
Right, and, and let me touch on that, add to what Mr. Holloway said about Weston. Weston did ask me to take it off the agenda a couple of months ago because he was working on it with the attorneys and the city and so forth. And I agreed, but he was supposed to bring it back to us for a work session. And now we're asking, we're being asked to vote on it. And I too have been receiving a lot of phone calls and emails over the past couple of days. And the, the citizens in that area, they are afraid to be annexed. And they're really upset that they didn't get a say in this. So they feel that we're doing this work session or to vote on this without a work session during this pandemic. And they're not even allowed to come into the building to voice their opinion. So they, I've been accused of doing this underhandedly during this pandemic. So it does concern me.
Mr. Dodd, could I add one comment?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I, I heard what Wayne Strasburg just said about the 30 years. I did not read that language that way. I will say that language is very confusing and hard to read. But I read it to mean that if it hadn't been annexed within 30 years, it would end. That it could be annexed within 30 years as long as the city boundaries are contiguous to the property. And at least under the current view of pipe stem annexations, that would theoretically be possible. Now, I have no idea what the city's intentions are. But at least from a purely legal standpoint, I think it would be possible and arguable to do a pipe stem annexation immediately if they wanted to do that.
That's not what the agreement says. It's very simple.
It's very unclear, Wayne. It's really...
It's very clear.
Yeah, that could. Yeah, this is Bill McCain, but I'll agree with, with Mr. Strasburg on that. I mean, that's very clear that, for one thing, Wacomico County have to petition for annexation or the expiration of 30 years for the date of signing the, the agreement. So, I mean, yeah, the city cannot, oh, number one, like I said, they couldn't annex the airport. They said they've expressed no interest, but they, they couldn't anyhow till at least 30 years have expired. And, you know, they have to be contiguous, but this is all after 30 years. So, I mean, that's, that's about as simple and clear as you can get. Well, pretty clear.
The part is about the city, the part is, pardon me, the part is about the county asking for annexation, yes. But it's the second part that's unclear. And if, if that's the intention, then it ought to be worded more clearly to state that. I didn't think that was even within the realm of possibility on that. But that can be clarified and with, with, with language. I mean, that can be done fairly easily.
Mr. President, the service agreement itself, which is included in the next resolution, resolution 21, does state very clearly, it says that the new water main is denoted as a denied access line by the state of Maryland. And it goes on to say that neither the county nor the city have the authority to expand the area to be served.
But the state does, Josh. They can do, the state can allow that at the request of the city or the county.
Well, the state can do anything they want, whenever they want. I don't know how we, I don't know how we can legislate that away.
Well, we can't legislate that away, but we, by legislating this in, that allows that until at least, at least the citizens have a clear understanding of what's going on out there. This, this is a problem, them not knowing.
I, you know, I, I understand 100% what you're saying, Joe. And I've talked to some of the fire, the firefighters in Parsonsburg. They initially had concerns over the service area. And I said, well, it's going to be a restricted line. That's not going to be a problem. I, I, I think it has been a rush to the council's table. I would have liked to have seen another work session, as I thought we were going to see. This is not the first time that the council's been faced with emergencies, so-called emergencies, simply because of the fact that we were up against it as a county. We were really up against it as a county due to delays, no matter what the reasons might be, not finding any fault with anyone. But I think we're in that state again. And unfortunately, similar to what Councilman McCain said, I think we have to move this in order to get, get the airport where it needs to be. You heard what Mr. Chambers said earlier. That's coming from the community, the business community as a whole. So I, I do understand and appreciate what you are saying, Joe, but I think we need to move it forward.
So are you, are you saying you talked to the firemen in Parsonsburg today and they're okay with this?
No, I talked to one of them today and their concern was about how they would be able to service any of the properties that might connect to the line. And I assured them that they did not have that to worry about right now because it was a dedicated line. There was also the concern that was expressed that they, you know, where would we be in 30 years? And, and I told them, I said, as far as whether the city of Salisbury is going to handle it or Parsonsburg's going to handle it, you're going to see that defined in the fire service agreement.
And that's one thing they didn't address in this, was the fire service agreement. And... Well, I think the fire, my understanding, it wasn't hooking up to the line that was the problem. It's the area. So I put it on the table, I, I put it for a vote for a table. Do I, I'd like to make, make that motion.
All right, we do have a motion on table. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, got a second by Councilman, Councilwoman Ackley. Any discussion? Okay, no, no further discussion. We're going to have a roll call on this amendment.
It's not an amendment, Laura. It's a table.
To table, you're correct. To table both resolutions.
Right.
Roll call, roll call starting with Ernie Davis.
Yes.
Nicole Ackley.
Yes.
Josh Hastings.
Aye.
Joe Holloway.
Yes.
John Cannon.
No.
Bill McCain.
No.
And the chair votes yes. They have a four to three vote.
And what I'd like to say is I think the county executive's office needs to reach out to the citizens in that area to fully explain to them what this means and to the fire service and address that fire service agreement. There's a lot of concerns on that end of the county. Thank you.
All right, I, I agree, Mr. Hastings, Mr. Holloway, I'm sorry. I, I do have a concern. I, I do support that airport 100%. And I, I've listened to a lot of people in the last couple of days that are really concerned about that area. And a lot of that area is my district. So they are calling me. I, I assume they're calling others, but I know they're definitely calling me and sending emails. So I, I thank you. And from what I heard tonight, between our council attorney and the executive's office and opinions from different members, it's very confusing. So I, I think at least another work session would be in order to get this straight and allow public input.
This is Councilman McCain. I suggest that work session be scheduled at our very next meeting, the first thing on the agenda.
I don't know if we can do that with the public not being allowed to come in the building. But I, I, I tell you, I think it's important.
This needs to move as, as my opinion, Councilman Hastings, this needs to move as fast as possible. We've known about this for a while.
And, you know, this was scheduled to start in February.
Yeah.
They scheduled to start it without council approval.
Okay, moving on.
Thank you, Ms. Pollak.
Do you have anything else? Thank you everyone for your comments. Ms. Hurley, do you have anything else?
I'd like to suggest that you make the main motion for each one of those resolutions separately. And then do the motion to table for resolution 21-2020. And I can read that summary, just, you know, for the public's benefit. So the next item on the agenda is resolution number 21-2020. This is to approve an airport water system agreement between Wacomico County and the city of Salisbury to authorize the county executive and to authorize the county executive to execute the agreement.
So you're suggesting that we read and vote on both resolutions separately after the motion to table them?
We have the motion to table for resolution number 20-2020. That was approved. I suggest that you do the same for resolution number 21-2020.
Okay, I was under the impression that Councilman Holloway recommended table in both of them, but we'll go ahead and formally do resolution number 21-20.
I'll make the motion to table. And this isn't a motion of no, not to do it. It's a motion to table it.
Okay, got a motion to table. Do we have a second?
Can I just interrupt for one second? This is Laura Hurley. You need a main motion on that resolution. So you need a motion to introduce or a motion to approve. And then you have...
You can do that.
Very motion to table.
Yeah, we can do that. Need a motion to...
21.
Did you have a comment?
I was approving the motion. I was making a motion to approve resolution 2120.
This is Bill McCain up. I'll second his motion.
Got a motion and a second.
Your turn, Joe. I'm making a motion to table.
I got a motion to table. Do we have a second?
A second. I'll second the motion to table.
All right, I thought, did you make a motion second first, Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Davis made the motion first. Any discussion on the table? All right, roll call vote. Ernie Davis.
Yes.
Nicole Ackley.
Yes.
Josh Hastings.
No.
Joe Holloway.
Yes.
John Cannon.
No.
Bill McCain.
No.
And the chair votes yes to vote. Resolution number 2020 is tabled. Ms. Hurley?
President, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hurley, do you have any public comments?
I do.
Thank you. And again, we'll be reading the public comments that were emailed to the council administrator.
And the first public comment is from Delaney Donovan from Wacomico County. She says, "Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. What opportunities for service ought experienced public health workers be engaging during the current situation? Additionally, what prerogatives does the county council have to engage appropriate mobilization of citizens at the coordination of local health organizations? We only ask as all of our efforts have been fruitless." And I have one other public comment. This is from Ashley Teagle with the Wacomico County, or she's from Wacomico County and Executive Director of Wacomico County Public Libraries. And so libraries to transition services to a virtual environment due to COVID-19. I would like the county council members to know that library staff are prepared to help in whatever way we can. We are currently asking the community to complete a short survey to help us better understand their needs during this time. We will use the information from the survey to help us shape our programs and services while our physical buildings are closed. I wish to share my concerns with you about the Pittsfield branch. It is my understanding that the former John's Auto Body Shop has been selected as a proposed site for the new Pittsfield branch. The current Pittsfield branch is 1,290 square feet. The proposed location is 3,655 square feet. When taken into consideration the basic needs of a library, I determine the new Pittsfield branch should be 6,512 square feet. This would anticipate future growth on the east side of the county and the needs of the community. The new library should offer space for library collections, including books, non-prens collections, DVD, audiobooks, and peer articles. Additionally, this new library should include a meeting room and amenities that the current library lacks, such as a branch manager's office, family-friendly restrooms, and ample storage for library staff and library maintenance staff. Public libraries are expensive to build, but the expectation is that the building is built to last. Moving the Pittsfield branch from one temporary location to another will not meet the needs of the community. It is true that a 6,512 square foot library will cost around $3,256,000 at $500 per square foot. However, the library could apply for $2,860,000 of that cost through a public library capital grant program administered by the Maryland State Library. This would leave 14% or $455,840 for the county to contribute to a new library. In other words, up to 86% of public library capital costs, including land acquisition and construction costs, can be covered by this grant program. With the uncertainty of the Kerwin Commission and COVID-19 on local budgets, I feel it is... I feel it is important we keep in mind that the state offers significant assistance with library facilities. However, these grants prioritize projects that are owned by the county. The current proposed lease agreement for the body shop completely locks the library out of applying for any state funds. And we would like to take the chance that once the original 10-year lease is up, that we would not be able to move the library immediately, as demonstrated by the current Pittsfield branch. A wise and experienced librarian gave me the following advice regarding library facilities. If you don't take the time to do it right the first time, you won't get the chance to do it over. I look forward to working with the county to get the Pittsfield branch done right the first time. And that is all the public comments I have.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hurley. Um, council comments?
Yeah, I have, I have some.
Mr. Holloway?
Well, I'd like to address that letter from the librarian. You know, the people on the east side have worked really hard trying to find a building to expand the library. Um, and I do want to thank the county executive for his attention to that. I guess some people's never satisfied. I guess that's a good way to put it. Um, I don't know that the county executive, I haven't heard from him, whether he's interested in building a brand new library down in Pittsfield or not. But I know they were satisfied with the room that they were going to build it on a lease, lease agreement with. So, anyway, I hope that her letter doesn't throw a monkey wrench into, uh, the people on the east side of getting a new library branch. That's all I have to say. Other than I want everybody to be safe, take care, try to follow the, um, governor's orders. Um, it's a frightful time out there. Call on your neighbors and check on them, especially if you have elderly neighbors. I actually had somebody call me last night. So thank you.
All right, I'm not going to comment. Thank you, big councilman Holloway. Uh, do we have any more comments?
I have made a comment.
Yes.
John Cannon.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cannon.
Joe, you and I aren't agreeing on a whole lot tonight. I, I think that, you know, it, it's a good effort, uh, as far as looking for a, a building for the library there. But I think that you seriously do need to consider the, uh, the librarian and the director of the library's opinion or advice in making that decision. When you build a school and it's the Board of Education that tells you what they need. We, we're getting a new sheriff's office. And we certainly go to, went to the sheriff and we went to emergency services to see if it was, would work for them. And they had a lot of input in that. And I think it's equally, and it is important to listen to the individuals who are going to be impacted by this, the individuals who are going to be working in that location to tell us whether or not they think it will be satisfactory. And their interests are the same as well, Joe. They're interested in making sure they have the services available to that community. So I, I really think that it needs to be listened to and, and, uh, we need to make sure we're doing the right thing, uh, before we go too far with any commitments. Uh, outside of that, I, uh, I'd also like to thank the, uh, the, the department heads and all the staff in the county that have been great during this, uh, during this pandemic. Uh, the healthcare workers, uh, the different agencies and organizations as well, such as the Chamber of Farmers that you heard from tonight and leading municipalities in the community. I've sat in many Zoom conferences over the last few weeks and, uh, it's, it's, it's all been very productive. So I'm hopeful, uh, and I think that, you know, we're learning a very hard lesson and, you know, but we'll, we'll come out better for that. Um, and we're going to, we're going to recognize what it means as far as necessity is concerned, preparedness and, and, and resolve. And, uh, I think it'll only make us all stronger, more efficient in addressing this in the future because we can't, we can't think that it, it won't occur in the future. Something else will come along and we'll be prepared at that time. So I'd only like to say for all the families to stay strong, stay safe for the families and pray for your healthcare workers. And, uh, thanks again to all the businesses for doing all that they can, uh, to continue to help, uh, safeguard the well-being of their employees. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Mr. McCain?
Oh, one quick comment, just everyone, stay safe. Practice good social distancing and pay attention to the, the rules out there. Let's get through this.
And, um, Mr. Hastings?
Yeah, uh, I will say very briefly there, I've had a couple of constituents reach out saying that, um, we need to be thinking as our, our region needs to be thinking about how we're going forward. A lot of our healthcare companies are going to potentially be out of business or in the fourth quarter or premiums are going to spike next year. Um, and that we should all be thinking about that locally and what that means for us. Uh, I told them I would convey that. Um, also, I was on a call earlier with, uh, Senator Van Hollen and, uh, and Carden. And they stressed again, when it comes to the, um, paycheck protection program and they expanded EIDL, um, just encouraging businesses and nonprofits to apply. Most likely you're going to be impacted more than you realize. So apply now, uh, was their message. And, uh, the, the third part of it was that, um, had multiple people reach out asking if their stimulus check, if that was taxable, if that's going to be part of your taxable income and that is not. I want to put that out there and make sure folks understand that. Uh, and last thing I'll say is, of course, stay safe. Be, you know, we'll, we'll get through this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hastings. Um, Mr. Davis?
Yes, I'd like to thank Mr. Chambers for his statement that he, the brief he brought on. It was very enlightening. Um, I'd like to thank his, him and his group that he's doing, they're doing a great job. They could keep us abreast of what's going on. It would be very, very helpful. Also like to thank Mr. Strasberg, he's still on. Um, even though he's a short timer, he's still coming to work and still working hard. And I, I, I really like to encourage him to get that decontamination. You know, and that would be really, really helpful, especially with PR and C where everything's coming in there and that's going to be like a hub. That would be really, really helpful. They could go ahead and move that along. And like the rest of the councilmen are saying, uh, citizens be safe. And all the instruction of the governor, I, I see this stuff on the news every day and I look at our governor, regardless of whether he's a Republican, Democrat, he's doing outstanding job. Standing his ground, he's not backing down from what the president says is wrong. He's standing his ground and he's doing what's right for the state. And I really commend him for what he's doing.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Uh, Ms. Ackley? Ms. Ackley? Okay. With that said.
Sorry, I lost you for a second.
Okay.
I'm on, yeah. I wanted to, um, I wanted to thank you, um, President Dodd for acknowledging, um, World Autism Awareness Month. It's, it's something that's near and dear to my heart and I truly appreciate you doing the proclamation. So thank you. Um, I also wanted to thank Executive Culver and Michelle Ennis for actively advocating for all children to receive, um, services, healthcare services with autism. Um, they have advocated locally and on the state level. So I truly appreciate them doing that. And thanking the Wacomico County Public Schools. They've done an amazing job with such an unpredictable situation. Not only providing meals for students, but also delivering, delivering education, whether it be via Wi-Fi internet or making packets for kids that don't have Wi-Fi. They have really tried to accommodate everyone. So I, I truly appreciate all of their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh, presidential comments. I would like to thank the citizens for bearing with us. As you can see, it's kind of awkward doing this through Zoom and, uh, people using phones and laptops. Um, it's, it's new to us, so, uh, bear with us and appreciate that. PAC 14 has been, uh, doing a good job working, uh, with us on this. So it's, uh, Council Administrator Hurley, she's been doing a very good job with this. Um, I think everybody's thanked the healthcare workers, uh, especially, um, police, fire, and EMS that are out there, um, doing the job and not knowing whether the patient or the citizen that they come in contact with has, um, this disease or not. Um, so it's very scary for a lot of employees out there, uh, in all fields, even the grocery store workers. The more you go in there, these grocery stores, you see more and more employees wearing masks. Um, so it's, uh, maybe a fashion statement coming up soon. I hope not, but it's the things that we have to do to stay safe. Um, so with that said, I, I hope everybody has a happy Easter, um, this coming weekend and want everyone to stay safe and stay healthy and, uh, share some of that toilet paper, please. Okay, I need a motion to adjourn from legislative session to go into, uh, open work sessions.
A move.
Got a motion by Councilman Hastings. I need a second.
Thank you.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right, could have gotten done roll call on that. But anyway, thank you. We're going to take a, uh, a five-minute break because PAC 14 just advised me that they needed to change the CD. So with that said, we'll be taking a five-minute break and we'll be back with you in a minute.